Good, all right. We will call the October 18th, Crow Wing County, a whole to order. Up first, Sheila.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I don't know, is this on?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, perfect. All that whispering I was doing was all heard all over anyway.
(laughing).
Okay. I have with me Carolyn White. I know you know her as Business Manager for Community Services, as well as April Maliski, and she is in our accounting unit. April did most of the work here that we're about to look at today, so I wanted her to come and speak to whatever I can't figure out.[46.12][46.12](laughing). So, I did make copies for you and left them in front of you. I put them in a different order after being up all night thinking how I could explain all this information in a way that wouldn't put you to sleep, or...[59.52][59.52](laughing). So, I have a format here that I hope it'll work. So, if you remember back in October 19th of 2021, almost exactly a year ago, we invited you all to our Division Manager meeting, Director meeting, and we went over the mandated services at that time. And we've done that for a few, quite a few years, with the exception of 2020. I made a decision in 2020 to not bring it in front of you, just there were competing other priorities. It was kind of a weird time, if you all remember. So, I did not bring it before you then. But, here we are again today, and I want to explain the format of how we're going to lay this out. The first two pages, where I have some underlines on the first page. The first page is 2021 actuals, and that's a high level of our entire agency. And then the page behind it is the 2022 projected. I'm probably, well, I'm not going to be here ever again, but in the future, I don't think you'll see the projected. It's just a little too difficult. I think what we're going to do in the following years is meet with you after the first quarter of the following year and give you actuals from the previous year. I think that paints a better picture, and it's not quite so much information, if you're okay with it. I used to come in like right around October, and trying to look at projected doesn't give you the right, I don't think, a really good picture. So, a couple months later, you'll get the full actuals after first quarter of that following year. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Perfect. So, if you're okay with that, that's how we'd like to proceed in the future. So, this first pack here is, you can see I underlined under child support. That first group is income maintenance, childcare, fraud collections, and child support. Kind of a big chunk. And there is a high overview of our county costs for the mandated services, our county staff FTEs for mandated services, and then our non-mandated services and our non-mandated staff FTEs. You can see from the high level, our services are all, in this section, our services are all mandated. So, if you look at, if you take these underneath and look at this first grouping, you'll see income maintenance, and this is a little deeper dive into that whole group that I just talked to you about. So, we're looking at 2021 actuals and medical assistance. We have the mandated services, personnel costs, FTEs associated.
Sheet.
Am I, are we following?
Yep.
I know this is so much information, it's hard to...
Sheila, can I stop you and just...
Yes.
And I promise the Board that I'm not going to try to ask too many questions. I'll try.
Could we get a real number on that, too?
But, it's easier if I just ask to try to figure this out. So, just for me to understand, so looking, it don't matter which one it is, but let's just look at the top. So, 700 under medical assistance, 776,000, that's what, that's levy dollars, correct?
Yes, that's county cost of the mandated.
Okay, the next column, what does that mean? County mandated staff FTE, 20, is 20 hours, can you just kind of dig down on that?
Sure. It's 20.07 staff. So, if you ever see the 07 walking around, I'm sorry about that.
So, there's 20, there's 20 people that are full-time working on this?
On that particular...
Okay, now I understand. And then, might as well just go down then to children, family services, under the cost, non-mandated services. What's, what does it mean in like 67,000 in parentheses? What is that? I don't understand that.
I'm not sure where you are at.
I just went down to the next under...
2021, 2021.
2021, right here.
Okay. That means that we took in more money than it cost us to do the program, this particular program.
Okay. I don't understand that. What does that mean? Just, just, we got reimbursed more?
Mm-hmm.
I see. And like, the adult mental health, 219,000?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So, what about, what does it mean then, adult services, 515,000, but that's not in parentheses? What does that mean?
That's how much it cost. That was tax levy dollars.
Oh, okay.
For all the services in that group. Go ahead.
If there's a negative, it means that we had, we received more revenue than it cost, and sometimes it's a crossover between years.
But, staying in that same row there then, 515,000, and I can see 17 and a half people, but then you go back to the county cost mandated, 689,000. What's the difference between the 515 and the 689? I guess I don't understand that.
So, so when you dig into these, I was going to kind of do them chunk by chunk, but if we wanted to move ahead, you'd go to the adult services, and you could see how it's broken down. Some services are mandated, and that's how much that cost, and some services are not mandated. So, and we might still bring in more money.
So, that means that like for adult services, $515,000 was not mandated? Is that what it means?
Mm-hmm. That is correct.
Okay, now I understand it. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, going back to that first group that I was talking about, where the first underline is, behind these two sheets are the income maintenance programs, and that just gives you a deeper dive into those, that high overview of those programs. Gives you a deeper dive into which ones were mandated. Well, they were all mandated in income maintenance. But, you can see that the GRH and the general assistance are mandated programs, but they're unfunded, so we don't get revenue for those. I do have to call out the childcare. That was a mistake on our part, and I didn't catch it until, I don't know, 2:00 in the morning or something. And those revenues are attached in the social services group. That was a mistake on our part. I missed it. But, it doesn't really change the overall bottom-line picture. So, the only unfunded mandated services that we have in this income maintenance, child support, fraud collections, and childcare are the GRH and general assistance. And hearing nothing, I'll move on, or do you want me to, do you have questions? No? Okay.
Okay, no, believe it or not.
So, then the next group that I have an underline under are the family services, up in social services. So, the sheet behind that income maintenance deep dive is family services, deep dive. Or a little deeper, anyway. And that will show you, again, the mandated services, the personnel costs, administrative costs, as well as public aid and purchase services. Following down, you'll see total expenditures of 7 million plus, and you'll see the revenues attributed to that, and the very bottom line is the county cost.
I would just like to mention on this one, the childcare revenue is at the bottom of this column, which Sheila said earlier that it's really an IMU service, but the account numbers are associated with social services. So, the expenses are on, under IMU, the revenue is under family services. So, it would be a better picture if we moved the revenue to the IMU cost for this purpose.
Give us an example of what you would do in the children's services, family preservation area that would be non-mandated.
I'm going to let Kara speak to that.
We know lots, but we don't know everything. Good morning, Commissioners. So, the non-mandated family preservation program would be the case managers that are doing child welfare. So, cases that have been screened out, so to speak, so they're at risk for child protection, but they're not open to a CHIPS or a child protection case. We go in and we do, we call it, I don't want to use the term voluntary, because we don't take no for an answer. We continue to work with the family to provide safety measures and protective factors so that they don't end up in child protection.
Well, it's an investment in our part to avoid an out-of-home placement expense.
Yeah, correct. The Board has been supporting that for the last couple of years, that we've increased our staffing in that area, so.
The other thing I noted in the children's mental health was the Systems of Care Grant as the non-mandated, or am I reading that right, or is that one? Yeah, it is, Systems of Care Grant.
Yeah, that is correct. That was a five-year grant that we received from the state of Minnesota, first ever to be awarded a SAMSA grant. That was to pilot and implement the CIBS model, the Collaborative Intensive Bridging Service. And we received dividends in out-of-home placement costs and residential services, seen a reduction in the number of kids. We had approximately 36 kids that went through that program over the last two and a half years, because it took us time to get it up and running, to get a community partner trained in, to get staff trained in on the model, to provide training and education across the entire community. So, we had 36 families or kids that were at risk for out-of-home placement for residential services, and less than 90% of those kids, so we had a 90% positive outcome, where those kids did not end up going into residential. So, prior to having the Systems of Care Grant coming in, we had eight to nine kids that were placed out of state, receiving residential services. We had a waiting list of six to seven kids that were in need of residential placement. So, we had kids placed out of the state of Minnesota. We had kids placed within the state of Minnesota. And we, since having the grant and having this service, the CIBS service, we have not had to place an additional kid out of the state of Minnesota, as well as within the state, we've had a reduction in the need for residential placement. So, the grant has now been used up. We are done officially October 1st. The cost to the county, because there will be a cost for the systemic family therapy, so the therapy that we used with these families, we try, or the provider bills as much as they can to medical assistance. However, because of the intensity of the model, there is a county cost, and we have a contract with one right now, a mental health provider, to provide that, and the potential max is 80,000. We project it's going to be 50,000. That's where our expenses have been running to have a full-time caseload. We've been in conversations with other community providers. We'd love to have another therapist. And I went down a rabbit hole. I apologize, Sheila.
Oh, okay.
I can talk about this all day long.
These are the two primary strategies that we have implemented to reduce our out-of-home placement expenses, and to try to keep kids in our own community by bringing the resources to them in their own home. And so, you look at it, and we're investing about 350,000 to do that. What's the return, Ben? About 1.5 million?
Right.
A pretty good return on our investment. That is why we are doing something here that is not mandated, because in the long run, we believe it saves us money. Cool, cool. So, as long as you're there, I did find another question. This is two, don't... What about the family services collaborative? I have not, I honestly, I can't remember what we've done with that. I thought we wanted to give them one chunk of money.
Which you authorized.
And we did authorize that, and so...
It was authorized. I don't believe we've paid it, correct?
No, no, that's also a really good question, and if I can...
Of course it is.
I can, I can help to provide the Board an update on the family services collaborative. So, you may recall that we explored many options for that collaborative. That was a process that for one or two years, a number of the Commissioners were on the Governance Committee and were part of that process. So, we established a 501(c)(3), so a nonprofit, and for the last year and a half, we've been functioning as a nonprofit here in Crow Wing County. We had hired an Executive Director. I think the timing and that the individual is not part of our community, it didn't come to fruition what we thought, and we were hoping to be able to secure a number of grants and do some fundraising campaign to bring additional dollars in to support that. So, we had to pivot and reassess what is in the best interest of our families and the Family Services Collaborative. And the school districts have decided, so Pequot Lakes and Brainerd are employing, as of January 1st, will be employing those Family Services Collaborative workers directly. So, they will use, if you may recall, the main funding was access dollars, which comes into the schools and can be used to support families and kids in having a positive learning and education experience. Then we have local time-study dollars, and those are dollars that come into the county. It's required that we have a local Family Services Collaborative, meaning we have partners from the school, partners from mental health, the counties at the table, public health, corrections, as well as a community partner action, so TCCAP at the table. So, those funds will support that, and then we have the member contribution. So, the county board, for example, we had been contributing 50,000 towards the Family Services Collaborative. Now, we will no longer have that member contribution as of 2023, and the school districts will have their access funds kept internally. And then the local time-study dollars, because we still have that umbrella, we're still a collaborative, we will distribute those funds out to the schools to support those employees, and we'll use like student member enrollment numbers to come up with a percentage. Carolyn will help us with the numbers. We don't leave that up to the social workers. Crosby-Irington, the one single school district in our county, did vote this spring to withdraw from the collaborative, so they will not be receiving those local time-study dollars to support the work within their school.
Who withdrew?
Crosby.
Okay.
Crosby-Irington School. So, that's where we're at right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What was your reasoning for that? Any idea?
No, I wouldn't be able to speak to that decision.
Okay.
Okay, should we move on?
Yep.
All right. So, the next group under the family services after that are the adult services group. And again, you can see, looking across, Commissioner Coring already drew it to our attention that there's some county non-mandated services in which we received extra money or above and beyond. And the deeper dive page just lays it out a little bit, a little bit deeper, as I was saying. Chemical dependency is a, has the mandated services, and then there's also some non-mandated in the chemical dependency area. And you can see across the adult mental health, developmental disabilities, and then the far left or far right is, under mandated, are our M-show dollars that are not mandated. But, they do come with some pretty good revenues.
Can you give us examples of the adult mental health non-mandated services?
I'm going to look at my other sheet here, because I don't think I have the adult services.
On adult services and adult mental health.
Yeah, I have it right over here. Okay. So, go ahead.
If you're there, I was going to say, we were talking about transportation, but go ahead.
You can introduce that one, and I can share a little.
Go ahead and share that.
Well, I was just going to say, one of the costs is, that's not mandated, is the transportation, and that's also under like chemical dependency. That's a non-mandated, but you want, you know...
Is that the volunteer driver program?
Yes.
Okay.
Another area is our housing support. So, we received a grant, you might remember, a year and a half ago or so, and we hired a social worker and a case aide. That service is not mandated. However, we did receive grant funding to cover those expenses, so that, that is another example.
I note that we more than broke even on the adult mental health side. We're 220 grand to the good. How about on the adult services, non-mandated side?
The non-mandated side? I thought that's what we were talking about. I'm sorry.
I was talking, well, I thought we were talking about adult mental health.
The non-mandated side would be the housing that we talked about.
Okay.
Some of the transportation expenses. That's the non-mandated. Mandated would be things like, we're the mental health authority for Crow Wing County. While we may not be necessarily required to provide the services, we are required to ensure the services are provided, like case management, to individuals in our community. You might remember a while back where we had shifted many of our cases out to community providers, and what we're seeing is, is they are, because of staffing issues and the complexity of the cases, not able to keep up with their caseloads. So, many of those more complex cases have come back to us for case management. So, we are seeing that as well on the mandated side.
As well as the state-operated services is on the mandated side?
Yes, state-operated is mandated.
The mental health side is fairly well-funded, relatively speaking. The adult services, not the mental health, but the adult services is underfunded.
And there are some new programs that we're looking at implementing, Officer Involved Care Coordination. You've approved an ARPA project where we work with law enforcement. You also approved a mental health project to partner with Sourcewell and our Region Five Counties. So, we are trying to explore some other opportunities for additional funding in that realm. But, you're right in that we still are lacking in some areas in terms of funding. Adult protection, for example, is a mandated service, and we get like $2,000 for a grant. So, it's significantly underfunded. We also get targeted case management, but still significantly underfunded.
Is our long-term care involved in this category as well?
Gina can speak to that if you, if you want.
Okay. Long-term care. What is not mandated that we provide through long-term care are the managed care organizations and the care coordination we provide for those over the ages 65. We have currently 577 clients that we are serving in the community with these programs. Depending on which program they are in, we have Blue Cross, Ucare, and Medica. We get a reimbursement per month, per member, for two of those programs, and the other one is reimbursed per 15-minute increment. So, looking at that, just an overview, it's anywhere between $78 a month to $159 a month, and it's dependent on the case. Some are more complex than others, have EW services in place, we get a higher reimbursement for those, closer to the $159. We have seen increase in this caseload over the last year to the point of a full, another full-time caseload, which is 55 to 60 cases. So, we're increasing every year due to the aging population within this community.
Are those healthcare plans covering the cost?
More than covering the cost, yes.
Well, part of the, part of what we're seeing here is also that work. Is that work accounted for here?
Pardon?
Or no?
I'm sorry, what?
Is that work that Gina's describing, the long-term care work, accounted for here in the adult services division?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
It's under non-mandated.
Okay.
Okay.
That last column. Right? Yep.
Questions?
Okay.
There's so many. Okay, and our next chunk is public health, which is also Gina, so don't go too far, Gina. And that is your next group here. And here is where we show mandated and non-mandated services across the entire public health program. So, child and teen checkups are mandated, WIC is non-mandated, it goes across the board. And we can go into each and every one of them if you'd like.
This is a little unusual in that public health is not usually so well-funded. It just isn't. And we've seen a lot of public health emergency grants coming through in the last couple of years, primarily due to COVID. But, we've seen a number of public health grants we don't normally see.
That's true. Public health has always been that preventative, that's hard to measure, and not always fully funded, but generally, they come with some pretty good revenues in local public health and some of those.
It isn't costing us anything right now.
Anything specific you'd like us to dive into in the public health ring?
What you see here is, it's all over the board, and it's a lot of grant funding for the work, and it's very specific grant funding for the work. We do get a block grant from MDH to help offset some of our general costs, but it's not enough to cover the non-mandated services in and of itself. But, there's a lot of, this is a lot grant-funded historically, and I think it will stay that way for the foreseeable future. So, just, can I ask a question? So, back to this page here, on the non-mandated, and then here's a $391,000 total, and then you go to the next page, and it's 320, so I would add those two together?
It's two different years.
Oh, it's two different years?
Yep, 21 and 22.
21 actual.
21 actual.
So, 21 actual, then. So, that's the total? That can't be the total for community services?
For non-mandated?
For non-mandated?
320,000 net.
Okay, well, it's better than I thought.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
I was at, that, I know, and I, I'm sorry, I hesitated to do that, but it is a compliment because...
Do we have a light bulb? The light bulb goes off?
So, what I think about is, I think about our levy, you know, now it's about 420,000, and that's one, 1%. So, I was adding those two together, and I thought, my God, this is 2% levy, but it's not, so. So, it looks like it's less than, less than 1%, so.
Yep.
Makes me happy.
What you see is, we're not doing a lot of things that we're not required to do. The things that we do beyond that are things that someone else is going to, is willing to fund it, and we think it's a good thing to do in our community. You don't chase grants for the sake of the grant. You chase grants because you think it'll do good in the community. But, if someone's else willing to pay for it, yep, we go after those. We also invest in things that we think will reduce our out-of-home placement expense, but it's more than just the expense. That CIBS work is going to create a better citizen, you know, keeping them in the community.
The only thing that I worry about is, I just, I just don't want, a grant is a grant. That is not necessarily ongoing funding. And having been in the legislature and been on Health and Human Services Committee for eight years with Senator Burgland, there was a lot of people on that committee that were very passionate about healthcare and community service type stuff. And so, we're going to have a whole new crop of legislators, and then they get there, and what do they want to do? They want to cut their teeth and have some bill. And I can remember, there was some bill, and I'm probably going to get this wrong, but it was pregnant Native American mothers under the age of 30. It was something, it was something like that, where you created a program for specifically for those people, those mothers, and then the cost, they said, look at the cost, it isn't very much. But, then you always looked at the tails, because as it went on, as the program, once you create a program, it isn't what it costs this year, it's what it costs down the road because it just goes up.
Yep.
And that's what worries me is, is we got to be mindful of that. I just want us to be mindful that, you know, oh, there's a grant? And it's kind of like, I think back to the Clinton, President Clinton years and 100,000 new cops, which I think would probably be a good idea now, but they'd provide the funding for a couple of years, and Brainerd or whoever would say, yeah, you know what, I'm going to, I'm going to hire four... I'm gonna, I'm gonna hire four cops here in Brainerd. But then, once that grant funding goes away, and then all of a sudden you go, oh my God, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to levy a lot more money. So all I'm just saying is, I just want us to be mindful of that. Just trying to, you know, look out for the taxpayers. I know, I know what we're doing here, but I just wanna try to, just, let's, let's think about that, rather than looking, seeing something shiny and saying, well, let's go after that.
We don't go after every grant.
Okay.
I wanna promise you, we do not go after every grant.
Good.
The grants we go after are things that we think make good sense here. And it is also part of that laboratories of democracy that local governments are. We get to try things. And I would argue, if we try something and it does not produce a measurable return on the investment, we should quit doing it. That's the challenge for government is, can you quit doing something? And what I'm very proud of this organization for is its ability to be adaptable and nimble and move. And so we do like to experiment, don't we? We like to try different things to see if it will work. The CIBS work is probably the best example I could cite right now. After that grant runs out, it has become so apparent to us that that's such a good investment, we're going to do it anyway. That's a grant that ran out, but we're gonna continue for good reason. There are other grants that run out. We used to get grants for car safety, car seat safety clinics. We don't have those grants anymore. We're not doing that work anymore.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the challenge, I think, is try stuff, but if it doesn't work, if the horse is dead, get off.
But the only thing is, the only thing is, Sheila, is you take like this, I know how the, the state works, the state, at the end of the day, the legislature, they're not worried about us. I hate to say that, but they're not worried about that. They wanna get their budget solved and get the hell out of town. That's all they're worried about. But when you look at this, this $219,000 that we received, more than we actually, I can tell you that there's the department or whoever's supplying that money, they're, if they know that we didn't use that, they're gonna, in the future, they're gonna be doing something to make sure that we're not just having a, you know, a high-producing cow coming in every year, you know, of, of having $220,000 to the good. You know, you know what I'm saying?
They're gonna want their money back.
Oh, yeah.
If we don't use it.
If you don't use it, they're gonna go crazy.
That's an excellent example of adult mental health services, for goodness sakes. I mean, we all know that there are needs in our community for adult mental health, and they're probably spilling over right now. So this also is a reflection of the fact, this is the one bill the legislature finished. They actually got about three of them done. But the mental health bill is one they actually did pass. You can see it showing up. Wow. We do try to be mindful of that, Paul. We do.
So I know, Sheila, you're trying to keep on time, but I think this is actually, this is really helpful. I, I know, I know that it drives everybody on the board crazy, but it, it helps me to understand.
Good.
And better. And once I understand, then I'm, I'm with ya, and I think you want me with ya.
We do want you with us.
Yes.
All right. I wrote it down. Our last group at the bottom of the page is corrections. So the corrections page should be next, a little deeper dive with the mandated and non-mandated services. And we have the juvenile probation, the adult probation, both mandated, and drug court and DWI court is the non-mandated. Also, I guess I don't know if I should speak to that, if Krista wants to. I could say that.
She's on teams.
She's on teams, okay. Those are, go ahead.
The only thing that I'll point out, commissioners, is while the drug and DUI courts are non-mandated, we would have to supervise the individuals participating in those groups.
Either way.
So, so we'd have, so that it is mandated in that they would be on probation, right? But we are choosing to operate a program that has better outcomes and results for a certain population. We do so in a way that's drug or DUI court, and so that's where the non-mandated piece is. It's a non-mandated program, but the practice of supervision we would still have to do. If that makes sense.
How, how do you, how do you measure, you said you have better results. How do, how do you measure those results? How, you know, if you're, the way you're doing it now versus?
So drug and DUI court are, are statewide, so we have, and some programs are national. So we're able to utilize statewide measures, but also we keep track of recidivism rates. So do, do the folks that go through our drug court program have better results? Do they end up back in the drug courts or courts in general related to drug offenses? So that's one measure of success. Krista, do you have anything that you wanna add?
Our agents and our drug court coordinator do report those results back to the state. And I know in the past, Kay Wilson has provided information to the board and data related to that. I don't think they've done that for a few years yet, but I can certainly check with the coordinator and get any information and share that with the board as well. The other thing that we did this, this last year is, because the numbers in that with the court backlog dropped, we were able to negotiate those contracts with the state so that we were able to take, well, in the past, we haven't been able to use those agents in other areas, but we did renegotiate those contracts with the state. So as our domestic violence, for instance, numbers increased, with COVID the last couple of years, we were able to renegotiate. We took an agent and were able to move some of our current staff to help with our domestic violence unit. And then, as juvenile numbers have started to increase a little bit, we've taken our drug court agent, and we've used a third of her to now manage some of our juvenile caseload as well. So it's been very beneficial to renegotiate those contracts and be able to shift staff where the need is. But if you would like some of that recidivism data, I can certainly talk to the coordinator and get that information for you as well.
I, I think an email on that, don't, don't spend too much time, I mean, digging for that stuff, 'cause I know you got a lot of work. But back to this, the $46,000 and the $18,000, so that's really the cost of the agent, then? Is that what you're saying, is that's the cost of the employee?
Yep, we do receive grant funding for both of these programs, but the grant funding that we receive from the state does not fully cover the position costs.
It's our net cost.
Correct.
So we're getting both of those for 65 grand total. And it is, I agree with Kara, it's partially non-mandated, because we, even if we didn't have drug court, we've still gotta supervise those. So is that half of a caseload? Well, then it's a half an FTE, and there would be the county costs associated with it, because the CCA subsidy hasn't changed, which is a nice pivot to what I really wanna point out. $928,000 on the adult side, $69,000 on the juvenile side, a million dollars it costs us to do the state's probation services. A million dollars. That's why that CCA subsidy not changing during this legislative session, that money comes out of the pockets of the people you tax, while the money is sitting in the bank in St. Paul. Good Lord.
So this is paying for an agent that's, that's working under community corrections O, Ospas? Okay. I see.
$42 million levy. Here's a million of them.
And again, we would be supervising those clients anyway, so it's difficult to say it's not mandated, when we would have to provide supervision to those clients either way.
But we're trying to be fully transparent about the fact that we don't have to do drug court, we don't have to do DWI court, but we do have to supervise those people.
So, so I guess DWI court and drug court, would you say that's kind of more intensive? It's a more intensive program rather than just supervising? It's more, it's more of an intensive program, correct?
And a shorter duration between if you did something you weren't supposed to do and the consequence. In the traditional court system, you have a DWI, you might be a year to a year and a half out getting that thing adjudicated. In DWI court, you're volunteering to go in, but then if you have a dirty UA or something like that, they might take you right from the courtroom and into jail for five days. And then you come back out, and okay, let's start over. Let's do this again. So it is more intensive, it has shorter feedback loops, and it produces a better result. We have people coming back into the system less who graduated from drug and DWI courts than in the traditional model. So there again, we believe we're getting a good return on the investment.
Sure. You know, I will say, you're not lit up very good. You look like, like somebody that's in the.
Witness protection.
Witness protection program. I can't even see your face.
This window behind me, and I, I do have the shade closed, but.
We gotta get out a light bulb, for crying out loud.
So that's an overview of all of our programs, and I think the bottom, maybe the closing statement part I'll, I'll leave you with is, the very bottom of that very first page that we've been looking at, 2021, of those county cost mandated services of $9 million plus dollars, 96.8% of our county costs are mandated, with 86% of the staff that we have in our agency cover mandated services. County cost, non-mandated services make up 3% of our county cost, with 13% non-mandated staffing, so.
And what that means is, we are bringing in outside revenues to help to fund our non-mandated services, so that the net cost of it is actually only 3.2% when we have 13% of our staff devoted to that work.
Okay. Mr. Chair, if I might, I'd like to say too, that, you know, we hear it from, from some of the candidates running against us, that you can come in and cut the grants that you guys apply for, that we can cut services, and no, you can't cut services. When you look at 95% of the services are mandated, you can't do that. So they're misleading people out there on the political trail, and I find that to be disingenuous by them. Then thinking that these grants aren't impactful or intentional. To your point, Administrator, who, we look at whether or not we're getting the return on investment, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, and we adjust accordingly. And I think our staff do a wonderful job of doing that. And so when these candidates come along, and I know it's a political thing, they just make the statement, but the public needs to understand that this group does a job that's mandated by a state legislature or the federal government, and we have no choice but to provide those services. So regardless of where that money comes from, it's gonna get paid by taxpayers, whether it's dollars that we pay to the federal or state agency and it comes back in the form of grants, or whether we put it on their property taxes or levy. We will pay, one way or the other. So let's talk about reality when we're out there on the political trail. That would be my challenge to all of these candidates who are stepping up as first timers to fully understand what they're saying and be honest with the taxpayer out there in the community. And with that, I'll stop my political rant. Well, for now. I may get back to it later, but.
And Mr. Chair, again, this is really shows, you know, I mean, I look at community services, they do Jesus work, man. And I'll tell you, they're pretty damn efficient for doing that.
Thank you. I, I just wanna say one last thing. April has been with us two years? Not even? Not even two years. And for her to take this project on and to get all this information, it's a very complex system. It's a lot of information. I'm very impressed with, with the work that she's done for us, so.
She also produces the out-of-home placement monthly report, don't you?
Yes, yes. But she doesn't do all of these.
She is our new favorite person.
Really good work being done over there. It did scare me when I saw those little, what looked like 250 pages of paperwork in front of you.
It's a lot of work.
It is excellent work. It's a great report. It reflects exactly what you guys are attempting to do over there. And so, again, I applaud you for the work that you do over there.
Thank you.
It's, like Bill said, it's Jesus work, and. Nobody else wants to do it, so thank you for doing it.
Lot of good leaders here, so we're very fortunate. Really good work. Thank you so much, and I, I think we're done unless somebody else has.
Excellent report.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's not leaving. He's gay there. He's gonna have new compatriots.
Thank you.
So we have this now.
Oh my Lord! I knew it!
Do you want your, your trees back?
No.
Memorize it.
And we'll have a test next Tuesday.
Oh, you guys are gonna do this.
Oh, I like this.
So these are the bill collectors? Is that what we're looking at?
Kind of, kind of.
Good morning. My name is Sarah McCusick. I am one of the income maintenance supervisors. I supervise the family, childcare, financial workers, and also the fraud and collections team. So I'm here with Jeff and Eric today. They are two-thirds of that team, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
All right, good morning, everybody. Thank you for having us today. As Sarah said, I am part of the fraud claims and collections team. My main area would be in the fraud prevention, so trying to keep program integrity when it comes to SNAP, cash, medical. And what you guys have in front of you today is an overview of our most recent years. It'd be from the 2018, 19, 20, and 21. The data from the 2022 year is not available yet. That usually comes in from the Office of the Inspector General, so we don't have that as of this moment. But what this kinda shows is that we've been pretty consistent throughout the years, around 400, I'd say 450 cases, goes down a little bit. But last year, as we all know, we had a, we had COVID, and we had the public emergency, so that we were very limited as to what we could do when it came to the medical, medical assistance side. We were, you know, limited in the cases we could review. So that last year, things dropped significantly, but that was throughout the whole, throughout the whole state. Otherwise, like I said, in the past, we've kinda kept around the 400-plus investigations. You can kinda see there's the cost savings for each year, the overpayments that we have established, and then the cost-to-benefit ratio, which is, that just means whatever amount we have designated for the program, what we bring in with our cost savings and overpayments, you know, that's the number that gives us the cost-to-benefit ratio. And we always wanna try to be over the $3 mark. Last year, we came in pretty close, but it was still above. But I'm looking forward to what this coming year shows. You know, we've started being able to do more investigations, so I think we're on the up and up a little bit, but we'll see. You guys have any questions on that?
Well, I guess I'm trying to understand this, so what, we're, I guess what I always worry about, and I know that we changed it in the legislature, is I, I just feel like that, I don't know, some people don't take responsibility, their responsibilities very seriously, and what I'm talking about is, you know, whether, you know, my mom and dad are gone, but a lot of people try to hide assets before their, their parents or whoever it is goes in the, in the nursing home or wherever it is, and then, then everybody else has to pay for it. And I'm just wondering, are you aggressively looking at that to make sure that people aren't trying to hide assets before they, are you doing a look back on some cases, or does that make sense?
Well, our goal is always to prevent the fraud, you know, before it happens. You know, we always have the ability to look back at cases. We've just, you know, tried to, our main focus would be whatever financial workers are currently looking at. If there is an application that is pending because they need clarification on things, we, you know, that's, that's what we do, recertifications, then open cases are, you know, that's the next thing. But if there's ever any case where anybody sends a tip, anything like that, we usually try to review those details. like that, we usually try to review those details. Um, you know, so anything that we might have a question on, we do review it. But our main focus would be trying to prevent the case, you know, trying to prevent fraud before the case opens.
What's the look back period? I'm sorry.
I believe it's seven years, isn't it?
For assets? If someone wants to divest themselves of their assets so that they will become impoverished to go on public assistance for a nursing home, what is the look back period?
I believe it's five years.
And so the, I think the answer to your question is people are routinely sheltering their assets.
Right.
The law allows that sheltering as long as it's not within five years of the time you needed to go within, into a nursing home.
Right.
You know, there's a cottage industry that helps people make those.
Oh, yes.
But you are also correct that it is the intentional impoverishing of someone so they can pass their assets on to their children and have the rest of us pay for the nursing home care.
I don't think that's right.
I don't either.
So, my Lord, I just had another question and now I forgot what it was, Bill.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, I know what it was. I know what it was. Let me ask it before I forget it again. I just to, just to educate myself. Okay. So let me give you a scenario and I guess I want to know how this works. So, okay, so I have a house, I'm married and my spouse goes in the nursing home and I've used up all my savings. And then it, it goes on for a long time. Does half of my house, I can stay in my house, I know that, but does half of my house become the property of Crow Wing County at that point?
I'll, I'll answer that. Um, my name is Jeff Moingan and I'm a collections officer here at Crow Wing County and I handle specifically the estate recovery. Um, after an individual would pass, um, I work with that family or those families to try to assess the values of the estates, um, and try to recover, uh, available assets.
Sure.
So the answer to your question is if a spouse goes into a nursing home and, uh, my spouse would go into a nursing home and I would be still, um, living in my home.
Yep.
That, that we could, the, the state could essentially put a, put a lien or medical assistance lien, um, or a potential claim on that property. Um, but you could continue to live there. Um, you could, you could sell the property, um, at, at that point. Um, but if that, if your wife would, if my wife would then pass away, I could continue to live in that home until at which point I would pass away.
Right.
Um, that claim would not be a, um, a recoverable claim. But in a scenario like that, if my wife would pass away, if I would try to sell my home and there is a lien on it, the Department of Human Services is, uh, handles that scenario. We can't as a county handle a scenario until, or a collection scenario until every, until both surviving husband and wife are passed.
And then once they both passed away.
Yep.
Then you recover what you calculate is the cost that was, you know, like, let's say the house is two hundred thousand and the cost was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, then we would recover that cost and then the rest would go to the heirs.
We would, in, in theory, correct. We would, we would, uh, establish a claim. So if it would go, if they were home, they have to go through a probate process. So we'd establish what that dollar amount is. So if husband and wife each had a claim, there each was fifty thousand dollars. So there's a hundred thousand dollar claim on that estate. If the home was a hundred and fifty thousand, we would be, we'd have a preferred claim. So that would mean we would get paid before, uh, normal medical bills, but we would be paid after the administration costs, we would be, or funeral costs, uh, or any taxes that are owed.
Reverse mortgage, would that?
Reverse mortgage is considered to be, yep. That's high priority. So that would be, you know, in a case like that, it's a little, the, the mortgage or, uh, is in more control in that probate process because they still have an interest in that property.
I see.
Yep.
Okay. Interesting. Okay.
Um, so going off of that, I'll just kind of go through, um, our, my numbers. Again, I said I was, uh, primarily handled the estate recoveries. Um, and what you see in front of you is from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two, uh, these numbers for two thousand and twenty-two are through the end of September in twenty twenty.
Wow.
Two, excuse me. Um, and, uh, the numbers below that are for, um, MA recoveries. This is for, um, um, any medical payment or medical assistance overpayments, um, and then public assistance, um, fraud, uh, excuse me, public assistance cash, food and overpayments for food, uh, et cetera. But that first line, uh, is what, what I focus on primarily. Um, so we've seen a, we've seen a, a little dip, uh, in twenty twenty, um, but we continue to, to raise up. And again, those numbers are, are very dependent on, um, you know, who has assets at time of death, um, who has no assets at time of death. So, um, you know, we have a lot of, uh, of claims that are, um, you know, a hundred thousand dollar claim and the family doesn't have, you know, a, a, any, any funds to collect. So at that point, it's just a matter of working with that family to identify, um, that there are no assets and, uh, documented and closing a case.
You're having a strong year.
What's that?
You're having a strong year.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
So my question on that number, seven twenty-four, nine seventy-four. So I know that when you collect that, um, the state gets a portion of that. That, is this the total amount that you've collected and then the state is minus off of that? Or is this our number?
Nope. This, this, this dollar amount, we'll look at twenty twenty-two, um, this dollar amount, seven twenty-four is what, what we have collected.
Right.
So far, um, with, as a whole. Crow Wing County in, as a general number can keep twenty-five percent of that.
Okay.
Um, there are different, there are specific, uh, programs, um, that require a little less, a little more. Um, and, but typically it's twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Um, now if you would look the next page, um, that graph, that Crow Wing County, uh, incentive. So if you look at the last column there, it says a hundred and eighty-one, two eighty, uh, my glasses, three, three.
Thanks.
Um, that is the portion that, that Crow Wing County retains.
I see.
And on the, on the bottom, this is based on, this is a ranking based on twenty twenty, um, medical assistance recoveries from DHS. So DHS bases their, uh, data on a, uh, federal fiscal year. So they're a little bit different than Crow Wing County, uh, than the county requires or the county does. Um, but we are, uh, fifteenth, we rank in, in collecting of assets.
That's out of all eighty-seven counties.
Correct. Yep.
Hennepin County is number one.
Oh, yeah. Well, Hennepin, Hennepin County, and not to get too deep, but Hennepin County and Ramsey County are, um, they have, they have a large staff that, that goes specifically after, uh, probating estates. And they're very aggressive. Um, and they, uh, they don't necessarily care about, I wouldn't say community, but they're, they're very aggressive. I, I would say that.
That surprises me with Hennepin County, but it's good, I guess.
Mr. Chair, if I, my one political statement, does the federal government actually know what their fiscal year is?
Observation.
No comment. These are two different things here, you know? Estate recoveries are, someone needed care, can't afford care.
Yeah.
We help. And this is trying to recover their assets so that they didn't have to sell their home.
Right.
One spouse had to sell the home in order for the other spouse to go into the nursing home. So estate recoveries are really, you know, just trying to get a little bit of that debt repaid with the assets when they no longer need the asset.
Exactly.
Right. So that's kind of a cool thing, I think, that we do. The other part that you're talking about, the overpayments, if it's, you know, based on our error, which I'm sure it is occasionally, that's on us. The folks that are committing fraud, and I've said it for years and years and years, we are a very generous people. We are a very generous people. But if you game us, we are coming after you.
You specifically?
Um, these two gentlemen. I hired them specifically for that purpose.
We should have been the witness protection.
I know, I know. Cause now everybody knows your look, your face. I used to, I, Daryl Olson was, it's not the mayor of Baxter, but Daryl used to be the collection guy and I always used to look for it. He just was a, just a nice, nice guy. And he was, uh, he was a good collector.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's really, I, I've been here a little over two years and, um, the, the job title was a little intimidating at first, but it really has to do with getting to know a family and getting to try to work together. Because in some scenarios where, you know, you have this house and you want to try to get your money out of it and there's, there's, um, a family dynamic that, uh, that would hurt the family or that, that they refuse to help and it just goes back on taxes or sheriff sale.
Yeah.
Or, or just, you know, is in bad, it's really to our benefit to try to work with these families and work with, uh, the scenario to do a, a win-win. Um, that's when I really see this, um, these programs or this collection helping where people say, well, you're not so bad, you know, or, or this isn't so bad, or I really thought you were going to take our house. You know, there's really a stigma out there, um, that, that the county's going to take everything you have. And really, you know, although that may be, you know, in a scenario, correct, but we're, we're definitely not, um, standing there with, uh, a wand and, and stealing it all. Yeah.
Cool.
Um, I do have some updated numbers just to, just for a glance, um, because this was as of, of nine thirty twenty twenty. So I looked as of, uh, ten thirteen. So last week, uh, had a pretty decent, decent, uh, week. So I wanted to call it out. Um, but now our, uh, we've, we've have eight hundred and thirty-one dollars, nine forty-four for our state recovery, which bumps our county incentive up to two hundred and four, nine ninety-eight. So almost, or two hundred and seven, so almost two hundred and eight thousand dollars we've got so far. Um, so in the last week, we've taken in about a hundred and seven thousand dollars, um, which helped our incentive about twenty-six thousand. So, um, but you know, that's, just to be clear, there's so much up and down with this collection. You know, some of these cases I've worked since before I started, you know, they, they were before I started. Some have been in the works for a year and you just don't know when everything will settle. And so things just happen to pop in and then you don't see any money for a month or two. And, um, you know, it's just the, the roller coaster. So, um, but things are flowing this year.
Good, 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 good. Good work, guys.
Any other questions?
Nope. Like you do a good work.
Thank you.
And I like the idea that you work with the families and
Absolutely.
You're not really a debt collector.
Yep. I could, I could sit here and tell you all kinds of stories that, that benefit our community and would bring a tear to somebody's eye, um, because, you know, we've, we've really saved, uh, a, a community and a, a family. Um, but I won't bore you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Debbie's watching.
Huh?
Debbie's watching. She should be heading, I would think, pretty, I don't know how long Rob's presentation is.
So we hold off on, uh, for. Do you want Rob to come up right away or wait?
Huh?
Rob?
Hey, Rob.
So alone.
You know how to clean a car. You're out cleaning room.
Holy cow. I thought you had an entourage, but apparently not.
Glad you're here, Chelsea.
You know how to clear a room.
So I'm here today to talk about our street name sign policy. Uh, the good news is it's a relatively simple policy, straightforward. The bad news, I had a, a lot of notes printed out and I know where those notes, notes aren't. I just don't know where they are.
They're over here.
We'll wing it a little bit. Um, so street name signs can mean different things, but in, in our case of this policy, it's the green and white signs that are right at the intersection that have the road names on them. Um, we, you probably all remember, uh, early two thousands, the E nine one one system came into play, the Adracing system. So at that time, we, I wouldn't say we were as consistent with street name signing. Um, and you really can't have one without the other. So there was kind of a rush at that time to, you've seen, uh, the smaller street name signs on top of stop signs out and about. That was the answer to get these street names up. So the E nine one one system was going to work and people would, you know, figure out where they were. Um, after a few years, we discovered putting those on top of the stop signs, those smaller signs is, was not the best idea. Um, the stop sign should be a standalone sign that you can see from a distance. You can recognize it's an octagon, it's red, there's nothing else on it. You'll still see some of these green and white signs on top of the stop signs, but any new installations in the last decade have been following our policy. So the, the new policy has been, uh, the nine inch sign blades, the larger text, and it, it's on the opposite side of the road from the stop sign. That's where you'll see them now. So our first policy, we actually put into play in two thousand and thirteen, which laid all this out. If you had a chance to look at the policy at all, a lot of it is the materials to use, the locations of the install. The main, to me, the most important part of the policy is the responsibility of which party's responsible. So at these different intersections, uh, a county-county intersection, the county pays for the entire, the materials, the install. Same at a county-state intersection. The state does not put up the street name signing at the intersections. So we do that to maintain our E nine one one system. We want to have these signs consistent for law enforcement, EMS, other one, everybody else, just like the address signs. We want them all in the same place. You look at the same location. I did reach out to law enforcement last week just to, to get their feeling on the importance of these signs anymore. You know, you picture the squads and the laptops and the Google Maps and everything else. And they said, no, they're, they're still very important to us. Their primary reasons were EMS. You know, the volunteers jumping their pickup, they don't, they don't have the laptop there. They're not waiting to punch something up on their screen in their car. They're just going, they want these signs. So I was glad to hear that. That's what I thought the response would be, but I wanted to hear it from them. So the, uh, updates in the policy are mostly formatting. Um, I started with the intersections and responsibility. So I got county, 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 state. If there's a county road and a township road, the county will pay for the install and the county signs, the township pays for the township sign. So if it's a township township intersection, they pay for everything. We're available to do the installs for them and invoice them, but they can, they can do it as they see fit. They don't have to follow our policy for the sign size or the location. We encourage them to do so. We've had townships in the past call and say, we want to, we want to upgrade our entire township at once. So we'll budget for that. We'll order the signs for the following year. We'll do the entire install. We still have some townships or cities who want to do their own installs, uh, their own type of sign. And even on some county roads, if you've noticed, Brainerd signs or Niswa signs, they have the little city logo on them. So they pay for those and they put them up. They just have to follow our policy on the, the breakaway posts and the location and the type of sheeting on the signs. So in twenty twenty-one, I had our folks pull the data. So we did fifty-three installations of street name signs. Only eleven of those were fully funded by the county. So twenty-one were funded by townships and cities and twenty-one were funded by developers. So there's a clause in the subdivision ordinance, if a developer's constructing a road that's going to require the sign, land services collects those fees. When we order the sign, put the sign up, we get reimbursed for that. So, um, we're roughly updating fifty of these intersections a year to the, the larger signs, the new locations. Part of it, we've, we've been hearing for a decade that the baby boomers are driving, signs should be getting bigger. You know, this, this follows that process, you know? It's reality. I saw a young guy here ten minutes ago that was looking for his glasses. So it's, it's not just the baby boomers, but it's all of us.
Add an audio portion to that too, because we might not be able to see, but we might hear.
Right. Yep. So, um, let's see what else do I want to cover? That's about it. I think you had the policy up and, oh, there's one addition. We plan to bring this. We plan to bring this to the county board next week. Um, unless there's a lot of questions or concerns today, there's one addition that didn't get into your copy, just an issue came up last week. Um, every year, we do night inspections of a quarter of the county, just nighttime sign inspections, um, to meet the, the retro reflectivity requirements out there. When we do those, we look at the street name signs also. So last year, we identified a number of, uh, county township intersections. The street name signs were not reflective anymore. We made a note, we ordered those. What's not addressed in here right now, but it will be in the county board version you see, is we'll have another paragraph that says if the county determines the street name signs at a county township intersection or county city need to be replaced because they're not meeting requirements, the, the township or city sign will be also. So we did a number of them last week, and the township in question called to say, we never heard you were ordering these signs, we got a bill for these signs, what's up? Once I explained this, we should have notified them before, but once I explained our nighttime inspection, we saw they're not, they're not visible, um, that we were going forward, the township was fine with it. But I wanted to get that into the policy, and then if the policy's adopted next week, we'll send a copy to every township and city like we did in two thousand thirteen, so.
Couple of things, I, you know, I, I, this, you know, when the, um, the valuation of properties were going up, I had this guy yell at me, and he said, "What are you spending the money on?" And it, here's another prime example, I never knew that we go out at night to make sure we're looking for the reflectivity for the safety of the public. And you wonder, you know, what are we spending the money on? We're, we're doing this work that, that's, you know, for the public. I, so I keep hearing that guy in my head all the time, and so every time something like this comes up, I, if I ever run into him again, I got a whole list of things that I can give him. And then, uh, and then another question, Rob, is how, how does it work on, on naming a road? Because I did have somebody that was, no, I don't need a road after me, I'm not dead yet, but, but I had, did have somebody that was, as I think I might have talked to you or Tim, that somebody was mad about the name of the road, and it's, you, you know where it's at, it's, it's Theater Road. And he said, it should have been Skid Row, you know? But he growls about it, yet he, I don't know why he doesn't like Theater Road, um, but, uh, what, how do, um, what's the procedure on that? I, I think you sent out a, an email.
A mail one I did, because that was a brand-new road.
Okay.
Getting built as part of the three seventy-one safety improvements. It's going to be a road that becomes an unorganized territory road.
Right.
It's going to be ours to maintain. I did send an email out with, you know, looking for thoughts or suggestions for a name. Mindot was putting together the plans, and the plans go the street names, the signs, so I needed to figure something out. I reached out to a number of different folks, I never heard anything back. I picked Theater Road, and no one else came up with anything different, so that, that's what it is. Knowing as soon as it hit the streets, there'll be people that hate it, but.
I know, I know they're going to hate it.
Yep. Um, there is a process, you know, if a developer comes in and says, I want to name this Bluebird Lane, Land Services and GIS will go through and make sure there's no Bluebird Circle right next door to eliminate confusion.
Yeah.
If they can do that, and it's not a profane-laden street name name, um, they'll approve it, and then GIS will update it, and then we will order the signs and go from there.
But the only place like this situation where there's a new road, you had to come up with a name, but if it's, if I am a developer and I have a road, I, it's, and I develop the road, I, I come up with the name?
Yep, yep. You, you, uh, propose it, and if it meets all those other requirements, it's, it's fine.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
I was just going to touch on the, you brought up the nighttime inspections again after I did. Um, we've been doing those for about ten or fifteen years. Our original process was going to be, once we've got through the whole county once or twice, and our GIS sign database is completely up to date, we know every sign, every year it was installed, we were going to start going to the process of, once a sign hits twelve years old or fifteen, depending on the sheeting, it would automatically get replaced. Mindot's gone to that policy, so it hits a certain age, it's gone, whether it looks brand-new or old. When we started the nighttime inspections, we found ten to fifteen percent of our signs not meeting our requirements. Now it's one to two percent, since we've been through the county so many times, and we're going to double-think that policy. It, it's appearing a lot cheaper to send two people out three or four nights a year and replace those one to two percent signs than to grab every sign once it hits twelve years old, because that's what the manufacturer says. There's a lot of variables. If it never sees the sun, it can last twenty years.
Yeah.
So, and a lot of them get replaced just through crashes and storms and other things, so.
One more thing, Mr. Chair.
Hey.
You know, it just, it never ceases to amaze me, all the layers and layers and layers and layers of government and different things, like for example, when we had our Natural Resources Advisory Committee and somebody complained about a, uh, logging operation that we did, they were all mad about it, and turned us into the state of Minnesota. There's, there's some guy that's sitting, he's sitting at his desk like this for the last ten years with nothing to do. And, and all of a sudden, the phone rings, and there's somebody complaining about our, uh, timber on how we did it, and so he puts together a sixty-page report. Doug, it was sixty-page, a sixty-page report! And he couldn't find anything that we did anything wrong, but I can't remember the name of it. And so I look down here, and I see American Society for Testing Materials. So here's another society, I don't know if that's a government agency, but it's another layer of stuff, you know, but, oh my God. Well.
I remember working on a road issue, I think this was with Tim and the name on it, and we were taking feedback from the neighborhood, and we got two names. And one was the preferred alternative for one guy, and the other was the preferred alternative for the other guy. And we tried to work with them to say, look, you guys agree, we'll name the road whatever you can agree on. I'll be go to heck, they could not agree on it. We had to pick a third name. Because we weren't going to pick a favorite, so we picked a third name. And it's like, I don't know, forget it, so dumb little things.
Yeah.
It happens. Any questions for Rob on the policy revisions?
Yeah, I'll plan for it to be on the consent agenda with that one new paragraph next week, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie.
Anything else? Anything else?
Any other issues?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to talk just a little bit about the report that's been requested by the individuals that come and, and question the integrity of our election process and the CVR report that is generated from the, during the election. And we have a potential issue there, I guess I would say it like that, that, um, would impact the privacy of the individuals' ballots. And so when this report is generated, it assigns a number to that particular ballot, and what we'd be looking at is, in providing that report, if it's requested, is that we would eliminate the column that has the number assigned to that particular ballot, so that we ensure that the privacy and the randomness of that report and the integrity of that report is maintained. Debbie, would that be correct, to say it like that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Barrows, yes, that's true. There was a, a report that was put out last week by a professor, a group of professors from Michigan State, or Michigan, University of Michigan and Auburn University, with regard to a potential vulnerability on a privacy flaw. The first thing I want to note is that they did make note in their report that this is only a privacy flaw in relation to this cast vote record report. It has nothing to do with the integrity of the election results, has nothing to do with the bearing on how the machines tabulate the votes that are cast. This is simply the fact that there is a concern or there is a potential vulnerability that would allow for, of someone who has access to information to be able to unrandomize that cast vote record report. This basically states that, let me give you a little bit of history on how the randomization part happens. Um, the cast vote record report produces randomized ballot order within each tabulator or within each precinct. So each precinct has its own randomization of the ballots that are cast in that particular precinct. Um, what their issue is, is that the random ballot ID number that has been assigned to each voter is randomized on a predictable pattern. So once you crack the code, once you figure out what the numbering pattern is, you would be able to identify and unwind that randomization algorithm. Basically, you would need to have quite a bit of information, and while this is a, this is a potential vulnerability, I want to assure everybody that it is assuming that the request or the person with the cast vote record has a significant amount of information, and there's a couple ways that that could come about. If I'm voter number six, let's say I'm voter number six at my precinct, and I know the person who's in front of me putting their ballot in the tabulator right in front of me is voter number five, I can now, when, if I have access to that cast vote record and can crack the code to unrandomize it, I can determine how voter number five voted in front of me, because I know that I'm voter number six, I know who the person in front of me was as voter number five, I may know who the person behind me is as voter number seven. I would be able to determine how that person voted. Um, they also hypothesized that poll workers or election observers can keep a list in order of every person who places their ballot into the tabulator. This is very unlikely to happen for a number of reasons. Number one, Minnesota law does not allow poll observers or poll watchers, we have poll challengers, but the law prohibits them from making any kind of list of voters who are in the polling place, who are there, who are voting, any kind of list of the order they might be voting or anything from that perspective. Same thing with poll workers or election judges, any materials that they are writing on, even if it's just scratch paper that they're making notes throughout the day, any materials in the polling place are required to be returned to the elections office at the end of election night. So someone wouldn't be able to take a list of the people who are voting in order with them to be able to cross-reference it to a cast vote record. They also noted that sometimes voters will post on social media. I was voter number so-and-so at such-and-such precinct. If I now know that that person was voter number eighteen at Long Lake Township, I can get that cast vote record from Lake, Long Lake Township, unrandomize those records, and I know how that person voted as voter number eighteen. So it's hypothesizing quite a bit of information, and, and there would have to be some hurdles that someone would need to go through to be able to access all the needed information to match it up. With that said, it is a potential vulnerability to the secret ballot, and I think everybody agrees that the secret ballot is our sacred tenant that that is built on as far as how our elections process works. So it would be a matter of us needing to remove that ballot ID, randomized ballot ID number column from that report before we would be able to provide it to anyone who is requesting it, if we want to ensure that this vulnerability could not be exploited.
Very good. So, Mr. Who or Debbie, does this require action from the board at the next board meeting? Or, or if this report is requested, is it something that is just done administratively?
Mr. Chair, um, we are consulting with the county attorney on making sure that we comply with the Data Practices Act correctly as it relates to the cast vote record, so I know he's doing a little bit of research right now, um, in anticipation of, I expect we will get those requests for the cast vote record for the general election as well. So we're waiting to hear that advice, but other than that, we typically will handle these kinds of data practices requests administratively.
Okay, and I just want to piggyback off what Ms. Erickson have said, is that the secrecy of our ballot is important to us. It's the number-one tenant, as you say, for our election process, and we're doing everything we can to ensure that when this report is requested, that, that secrecy is maintained. And I want to emphasize that to the public, that, that we're not denying the report, but we are going to maintain the secrecy to the best of our ability. So thank you, Debbie, for, for that explanation.
I think the one, you know, the whole point of the cast vote record is to show the transparency in our elections process, that that is what we are trying to show, is how your ballot is counted by that tabulator is accurate, that that is exactly how that vote was cast, there was no voodoo done by the machine after you put your ballot into the tabulator. The thing we have to be cognizant of is making sure that we are not putting the transparency above everybody's right to be able to cast a secret ballot and not have anybody know how their vote was ca-cast. So.
All right.
Any other questions? Please feel free to let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and, uh, Commissioner Coring, I have a couple of things that I would like to just throw out there before we adjourn. So I would like to, you know, today's October eighteenth, a very important day in our history, so in eighteen fifty-one, the Moby Dick book was first published. I'm not sure you were aware of that. I think these, these are going to be.
Bringing that to my attention.
And in eighteen sixty-seven, Alaska became part of the U.S. and was purchased from Russia, who apparently wasn't very good at negotiating a cost for that particular piece of land, which we appreciate very much. Today's also National No Beer Day, which, oh boy.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy.
Not a lot of people celebrate that one.
We got a couple offenders in the room, and then additionally.
Oh, my.
Today is International Legging Day for the women, so we, we want to make sure, and any man that wants to wear leggings, too, I guess, for that matter.
Correctly reckoned.
And, uh, probably the biggest day that, that I've seen so far is that today is National Chocolate Cupcake Day. But I have one more, that in nineteen sixty-two, a one person in this room was born, and we want to celebrate that day with a chocolate cupcake.
Oh, Lord.
Mr. Who, happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Wow, wow. That was a.
It's not really an accomplishment, it's just another year I haven't died.
Well, it's a, it's an iconic year now, because you, the math.
I'm officially eligible for AAR.
But I have a dozen chocolate cupcakes here to celebrate, so anybody that would like a chocolate cupcake, please help yourself.
Might as well have a cupcake.
You guys are going to sing?
Please don't.
There's an app we can pull up.
And with that, Mr. Chair, I would, uh, make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, and we'll adjourn then.
A second by Tim.